Good morning, everybody. Alright, thank you guys all for coming. We're waiting for Hoikee. They livestreamed this on on Hoikee, so we just, uh, thanks all for coming. Appreciate you guys being here tonight. This is the sixth town hall. We saved the best for last. And, um, so once, once we get rolling... You guys can come sit up front. We don't bite. Are we ready? Alright, alright, welcome everybody and thank you again for joining us here at Kekaha Neighborhood Center. My name is Mel Raposo, um, your council chair. Behind there is Bernard Cavallo, who is, uh, one of the council members and our staff. Christian Nakia Tressler is back there as well. And we have from the administration, we have Troy Tanigawa, the engineer of Public Works. So, we are here tonight. Basically, it's a listening session. It is, uh, the reason we did this was because we want to make sure we hear as we approach the budget session. We get the mayor's budget on March 15th. We want to make sure that your needs are met and that if the council needs to know what needs in your community, we can possibly work with the mayor and get it in the budget this year. Um, this, this is not a, uh... What I think about we should have in the budget, this is all about what you guys should have and/or want in your communities. And, uh, it's, we have, Christian in the back has these comment cards, so if you have an issue that you want us to take a look at, or if you have a concern, then I would ask that you stop in the back and, uh, see Christian and fill out one of these forms. It's just a contact, we just need your contact information with your issue. And then we will follow up with the proper agency, whether it's county, state, or federal, or even private for that matter. Uh, but we will, we will formalize it and then we will track it. And you guys will have, uh, you will be in the loop. So, all of the communications that we send out, all the correspondence that we send out, you'll get a copy of, and everything that we get back, you'll get a copy as well. Um, I'm not sure how many we've had over the last five town halls. I gotta believe it's probably thirty or forty of these that we are, um, in the process of, of addressing. Uh, but that's kind of what it is tonight. So, uh, I know there's a sign-in sheet in the back if you guys want to speak, or if you have any concerns or questions. Um, and you know, there was a question about how come we don't have all the council members here, and I just want to say, and this is where I ask for your help, is our Sunshine Law, which is a really good law, it's open government law, and that requires us to discuss and meet in open and make sure the public understands or knows. So, we have a six-day posting requirement, so every, everybody knows when the county, the county council is going to get together to discuss issues and vote. But in that same good sunshine law, it's a very bad clause, which says no more than two members of the council can meet at any time, uh, whether it's a community meeting or any, any kind of, uh, meeting. And it's, it's very difficult for us because, uh, in community meetings is where we get our information. And in fact, you know, I say this all the time, and I know some of our veteran attendees here that's been through most of these town halls, uh, I say the same thing. Yeah, we don't know what we don't know. If we don't know the issue in your neighborhood, then we don't know your issue in the neighborhood. So, by not allowing us to get together in a community meeting in the different communities is very difficult for us. And that's why these town halls are so, so successful. Uh, the other reason is we allocate an hour and a half, and tonight I'm going to ask that we really get out of here on time because for those of us that live on the other side of the bridge, we found out when we went to Kalahail that they do roadwork in Lawai. And man, we, I was stuck in that traffic for, I don't know, like forty minutes, no move, no, nobody was moving, so. Um, but I will stay as long as I need to. So, but I did want to end the meeting at, at seven. Um, but imagine if we had two or three or four council members up here, that, and even if every council member throughout the night only spoke for ten minutes, collectively, you know, to get total, that would take away an hour and ten minutes from the public. So, it's not that I don't want anybody here, it's not the Mel Raposo show. If anything, it's, it's our staff that's the star of the show, because they gotta compile all this stuff and put it in a, in a, in a proper format to send it to the agencies to get a response. So, I appreciate you guys, uh, understanding of that. So, with that, who's first? We do have a, a microphone that they'll come to you, so you don't have to stand up and, I know people shame. No be shame, guys. Tonight is, uh, is for you folks, so.
My name is Lola Cruz.
Is the mic on? Okay.
I am the senior senator here and resident of Kekaha. So, I have a few things that I'd like to bring up. I know some cities normally affect the planning of things. And my first priority is busing. Bussing as a group for the seniors is here to find a way. You know, I'm speaking on behalf of the seniors. Uh, we don't have that. It means to have important things. Uh, the bus is, you know, there for hours. For, you know, for example, for the center or for any other center. As a group, we all need to, uh, be careful when changing or dropping or expression to visit other places. To enjoy the view of Hawaii. So, I'm asking if I'm all possible to get this bus, because you really need it, isn't it? You need it, you know, we need to get out. Um, I risk myself paying passengers in my car, um, beyond the grid for what it may be. Uh, and I don't, I don't mind that he is. So, with the bus of, uh, your authority, the bus driving is part of this, to your class. And at least once a month, right? The other month, I need to find a day to get paid. That he's not us to get out of, uh, in a, in a bus, in a company bus. And the other thing I always think about, I work a lot on repair for Google. Uh, and I like the idea of influencers on, uh, on the street names, but not all of it happening. I don't know, you know, it gets so dark in Lawai, it's hard. So, you know, the street lights don't stay. But I saw scripts on the street name.
The street names, you mean the street name, the sign?
On that post, on the post, you know, where they say what the street name is. I assume you're serious now, just believe what you're saying, but not following that rule. And also, I was informed that Okinawa has no street lights going up there. Um, we need to do something because we don't want to wait until something happens. You know, my idea is to not go away for us to be ready for it. We need to have something. Uh, you know, some kind of street light or flicker a little. Um, and we need to have something up there. It takes, yeah, a while there, but I'm sure.
Okay. I, that complaint, we hear a lot from people, um, across the island, actually, because a lot of people go up to Kokee. Um, part of the road is state, part of the road is county, but we can definitely pass that on. I, I think that is one common concern. I did want to address the busing, the buses, because, you know, that is another issue that comes out at all the town hall meetings. And the bottom line is, it's, it's not a funding issue. We have the money, we got a lot of buses, we just don't have drivers. And I know, I'm not here, I hate giving excuses. But if you folks have kids or grandkids that like find one job, have them drive bus. The school bus is going through the same problem, the county bus. We, we have to stop Sunday service because just no more drivers. And I don't, you know, in fact, it was Bernard and I had met with the transportation director when she dropped that bomb on us. And it's not, I mean, how, I just don't know how we fix that until we get more people that are willing to become bus drivers. They pay very well, too. I'm not sure, it's just, it's hard to find workers nowadays for so many positions, but.
Okay, and my last one, if somebody brought up, uh, here for me, it's time to go down to the theater. Is there any way that you can share a dump site on three different areas that you still have your family? And that's what we end up with the whole.
The, we just had an update from, uh, Public Works. We had a capital improvement update a couple of weeks ago. And they are actually, in, in the capital improvement budget is, is, uh, funding for a, a new study. Um, for a, a landfill sighting study. So, that is a, a major concern for the people out here in Kekaha. And actually, even the west side in general, because all of the trucks come past the west side. Uh, I personally would prefer to see the landfill closer to the center of the island. It just makes much more sense. But we are limited to, uh, locations that meet the requirements of the Department of Health and the EPA and all of that. So, uh, all I can tell you right now is that they're, they are going to be going off for a new site study as part of the, the, the plan. So, I think everything is up in the air. Um, yeah, I mean, I wish I had a better answer for you. I, I know that, one of the reasons we want to come into the communities is because we want to hear from the communities, um, on what their positions are on, on all the major projects that are going on in your area. So, yeah, feel free. And again, I'll, I'll be around. Troy is here as well from Public Works. Again, I don't want to get into a discussion and, uh, on, on landfill, but I do want to hear what your positions are. But as far as, two weeks ago, um, we, the council was informed that, uh, the administration is going out for a new site study. Thank you. It was working earlier, Eddie. What happened, man? Did the batteries run out, or? I tested it when we came in. Maybe I blew them out. I don't know. Is the lights on on the?
Yes.
On that? Nope, there. I heard it. I heard it.
Hello, look.
There we go. Not anymore.
Hello, look.
Yeah, I don't need a mic.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I understand what you think, I'm like, so now, um, the county's been spending so much money into looking at little sites for our territory. Why do you need to be honest with you, right? Okay? Community of Kekaha concerned that we, we have a landfill. Just make it work well for us. Keep on having a landfill. Okay, but instead, uh, we get paid. But I miss the whole others. But like I said, um, uh, we could have some could be another site out towards Maalo that they're looking to. There was one that the Hanmalo. Just don't get.
Me neither. Me neither. I mean, that is an issue that we have, you know, again, when Bernard was the mayor, they, Maalo was the site that had been, and, you know, when the administration changed, priorities changed, and we're on the council, I mean, we, we're, we just gotta basically fund the decisions that are made by the administration. And I, I don't know, just to be honest, I mean, from the testimonies that we receive and the phone calls that I get, I'm not so sure how much of the Kekaha community really wants a new landfill in Kekaha. That is the, the question. And again, I don't want to get into a debate here tonight about that. I'm just saying, the, the administration has made a decision to go out and do a new site study. And I, I, I cannot tell you, uh, why, but that's going to be the process. And I really want to revisit the Maalo site, but that's just me. And again, I don't want this to be about me. But I think the Maalo should be looked at again, and a lot of work was put into that plan. A lot of work was put into that plan. And, and in fact, the community had, had, uh, supported the plan to move it to Maalo. But there is some concerns out here. Um, I don't know if you guys just saw the water study, the water quality study that just came out. I'm not prepared to talk about that tonight because honestly, I, I was gonna be straight up. I don't really understand everything that was in that report. We are having a briefing next week at the Public Works, not this week, but next week, at the Public Works Committee with the Department of Health and with, um, the EPA and the experts to kind of decipher that and share with us what that means. Um, as a layperson, I read that it, when you get that much chemicals in the water, it's a concern. Now, I, I don't know whether it's from the landfill or from the, from what else, but that's something that we gotta address. And we're going to address that, uh, in next, a week from Wednesday. Is it working now?
So, Mel, maybe some of the residents in Kekaha don't want the landfill, but you gotta be honest, right? The landfill is here and we've had it for over fifty years. Irregardless of whether they move it somewhere else, we still gonna get the landfill.
Right.
Okay? So, all we are saying is, um, i- i- if you're looking at chemicals into the water, at least it's not into the water table, drinking water, right? Because of where the landfill is situated. So, for us, like I said, and for years we've been telling you guys, make it work well for the community to say, yes, we benefit from the landfill.
Yeah, I, I mean, it's, it's not my decision to make. Um, but I, I we, we gotta wait and see what the administration proposes, and then when that happens, you know, the, the council is kind of stuck. We don't have a choice. I mean, what do we, we need a landfill. And the question is, where is it gonna go? And I think the process to site a landfill is, is a lot more than community support. It's beyond that, right? Because you gotta figure out what are the environmental impacts to that community. I think that is the question, not, not so much who wants it or who doesn't, or how much we pay our community to host it. It's, is it going to be detrimental to the public? And that is what the sighting study will do. Um, I agree with you. I mean, we did the studies. I mean, you know, remember where the number one site was? In the middle of the coffee fields in Kalahail or in Ela Eli. That, that was the number one site. And we're not going to dig out coffee farms and put a landfill. Uh, Maalo was, I thought, was a good, a good choice, but we'll see, we'll see. And just stay tuned because that's gonna come up, I would assume relatively soon.
Um, well, you asked about like where we stand on the landfill. I'll personally say that I think it's the island's responsibility, not just Kekaha's responsibility. But that aside, um, I just wanted to know what the timeline would be, or if you know the timeline for the site study. Um, like what the administrative, administration is thinking, like is that in the next year, in the next two years? And then also, what was the other question? Uh, it was, oh, when would we have access to the water quality results?
It's out. It just came out.
Okay.
If you leave your contact information, I can email you.
Okay.
Yeah, I, we just got it a, a few days ago. And, uh, yeah, I think, I, I, in fact, I got emailed from the West Side community members also sending me the copies. So, it, I'm, it's, it's available. Um, but I can get that to you. And, oh, I'm sorry, the timeline? So, the, but the funding is there, it's, the process is long, procurement process is long, the actual study is long. And so, yeah, that, that's, that's a question that we will be discussing when we get to our budget hearings. Bernard, how long was the site study process for Hanamalo? How long was the site study? About a year?
Year and a half.
Year and a half? That's a year and a half that we really don't have. Anyone else?
Hi, Mel.
Hi.
Um, I'm gonna change the subject because we can go on and on about this landfill.
Yeah, thank you.
My, my topic would be Parks and Rec for us because I do a lot of community stuff with the kids, Coach Pop Warner. My kids are involved in all these sports in these parks. Is there any plan for improvement, especially like this park, Waimea Park? Does the county have any plan to improve our parks?
Improve in which?
Just our facilities. I mean, our neighborhood centers look like this for years. We don't have like any other facilities. We cannot host any big tournaments here, baseball, football, soccer.
I know, as you know, I'm in Pop Warner. And, uh, it is frustrating and you know, funding is always the key, you know, we're, and again, I, I would speak for myself, but the infrastructure of this island is in dire need of repair. And when you start prioritizing things, you know, it just gets back into the, you know, never make promises you cannot keep, right? So, it's, we are, this council, I will tell you, is, is very supportive and I, I will, the mayor has been very open with us and very, um, um, available to us as far as what the council, what projects the council wants.
I mean, we could start with a small thing like trash cans. If you go to any park from here to Honolulu, I mean, I'm pretty regular at these parks, daily even, and there's no trash cans. Ever since COVID, we can't find a trash can anywhere. So, like, we get people using our parks and they just leave their trash in a pile. But there's no trash can. We tie up trash to the...
No trash cans, no, no trash can receptacles?
Maybe one or two. Maybe you'll find one, but it's like clear across the field somewhere. Before, you could find it like at the dugout or like the entrance to the park. There's like no trash cans. Honolulu Stadium, there's no trash cans at the baseball parks. Kekaha, I think we may have one that we put their Pop Warner season at the very beginning of the field. That, that's the whole park, though. There's no trash can.
Okay. I'll definitely follow up on that. Um, but as far as improvements, I know there are, you know, some improvements in the, in the CIP budget for park improvements. They, again, you know, it's really not a funding issue. And that's why these meetings are important because we want to know specifics of what you guys want to see out here. Trash cans?
I mean, that's simple, right?
Yeah, I mean, that's like a necessity. I know that Vidina Stadium doesn't have any trash cans in a parking lot as well.
Nothing. Yeah, there's nothing.
I didn't realize it was...
We waited, we waited for Vidina's, I mean, our Honolulu Stadium to be fixed. It's like going on two years already, I think. And I heard it's still not gonna be done for this baseball season. It's gonna be another year because they gotta dig up some water line or something like that.
You know, again, I, I do want to address these concerns with the most accurate information as far...
It's, it's small compared to a whole landfill, but it's still very big to some of us in this small community who are kids playing sports all year round.
I agree. And, and that's, that's really the kind of issues we wanted to hear about. Because that, you know, these are the kinds of things that we can, uh, again, we, you know, we can make the request. We can fund it. Uh, but it is up to the Parks Department to implement, so.
And then number two before, before I hand over the mic is that, I don't know about any other neighborhood center, but this one in particular, their Wi-Fi stays on. So, during Pop Warner season, I know for sure because I coach right outside this building, the homeless comes and hangs around here almost, like they're in and out from four to seven that I'm here. And I'm assuming because they have Wi-Fi. Now, I don't want the county to shut down electricity like they did Waimea Park because we want our families to still come and enjoy the facility when it's open and no one's there. But they come here, they hang out. Almost daily, the same group of people, four to seven. I mean, I found what I think called a nine-one-one non-emergency number, and I call them almost once, twice a week because, hey, just come and do a spin. Because once you spin and they show presence, they dig out. I mean, because they're drinking, smoking, but I'm, I mean, some guys cover their whole gaming system in the neighborhood center. It's like, what are you guys doing? Playing games? Because there's free Wi-Fi. And I didn't know that until just this season. I'm wondering, why are the same people coming here every day? Five, five o'clock, five-thirty? Cooking, white, checking their emails, I guess. And I don't know what happens after that, but you know, sometimes it gets really out of, out of hand, the fighting and all that, so. It's just, I mean, why is the Wi-Fi on in here? I think it's on, at Honolulu by this neighborhood center, too.
I think all, I think all of the neighborhood centers now...
I mean, can't they just turn it off? Because I'm pretty sure that's what they're coming around this types of area for. I don't know.
You're probably right. I mean, I think that's...
I just don't want them to shut down the whole facility because we use it on occasions without a reservation. Just to hang out. And it's, it's taking away from the family.
That's the question, right? Because I know this came up, I think in Kapaa, where a lot of people are frustrated with the homeless taking over the county facilities. And we have no vagrancy law. We have no, you know, parks are open here. There's no prohibition about alcohol um, in county facilities like they do in the other, other counties. And that's, that's a decision the community is gonna have to make. Uh, because the simple answer is just float a bill, pass a bill, close the parks at night. But the public gets punished, right? The, the citizens, the residents gets punished. The, the Wi-Fi, you know, I, I gotta believe that our IT could shut it off after, God, I think with our technology, who knows? Uh, we'll definitely raise that. Um, the other thing is the having better patrols from KPD. I mean, it's, that, that is, again, it's an ongoing issue at all the parks. And some places it's bad. It's like really, really, really bad. No, I mean, it's bad, though. If, if, if you're noticing it, and if they're out here and they're doing their drugs and their alcohol, and that, that's bad. Whether it's one person or five people, it's bad. And... Yeah, well, you know, if you want to guys have that discussion, I got a lot to say about that discussion, but I don't want to, I don't want to solicit. But I, I got that and, and, um, we'll definitely, the trash cans, that one, that one gets me out. And, and that's the reason I want you guys to do this form, so that you see the responses that we get back. Because it's one thing for me to get a response and then say, hey, sister, you know what? I got back from parks and they'll work on it. But it's much better, and to be honest, it puts more pressure on the administration when they see it's actually a real resident that's sharing the concern. It's not Mel Raposo who complains about everything every week. It's, this is really generated from the constituent, from someone in the community that is saying, we, we need help. So, that's why this is kind of easy, makes it easy for us. Because then, then it puts a face to the name and it's not just an upset council member who is constantly sending memos about check on this, check on that. It, it does, I promise you, it does make a difference. I promise you. So, make sure you stop by the door, put your... Hey, we don't sell the information either, okay? We don't sell this information specifically for that purpose only. Anyone else? I'm sorry?
Hi, uh, Joan from Lawai. Isn't it kind of, um, is it the administration's responsibility for the different departments like Parks and Rec? And wasn't it long ago that they cut back on manpower for the reason of, um, uh, funding? That if you have trash cans and you have to have trash pickup, right? So, what's the explanation? And is it admin that we're supposed to be talking to about the different departments and not so much county council? You folks do the budget, but it's actually the departments, right? Parks and Rec?
Yeah, and I can tell you that, like everybody else in, on this island and throughout the country, really, staffing is an issue. I, I can't, I don't recall a time where we didn't have positions because we didn't have funding. Funding was always available, but it's just finding workers. That is an issue. We have vacancies in every department across the county, and it's very difficult. And, and again, it's not limited to the county. And, uh, but the reality, well, to answer your question, yeah, the council is a legislative branch, so we do, we, we legislate it. We do the laws, we pass the budget. Um, we, we get the mayor's budget on the 15th. We go through each department. That's, again, public and it's open and it's on Hoikee. And we ask that each department and basically validate or justify your budgets. And we have opportunities to remove funding or add funding. But, yeah, the, the actual execution of the departments is the administrative function. And we, it's, you know, the charter prohibits us on the county council level to direct any department to do anything. So, if, if I was to tell Troy, Troy, get you guys over to Ela Pio Road right now and go pave that road right now. And if he files a complaint, please don't, but if he does, I lose my seat as a violation of the charter. And it's, you know, I, again, I hate making excuses or punting to other agencies, and that's why we want to do this. So, we, we can get the actual issues that impact you folks to the right department. And this administration, I can tell, not just because Troy is here, they're very responsive to the requests that we send over. Very responsive. But they don't know what we, and we don't know what we don't know, right? That's why it's important for, for us to get the input. Okay, sorry.
Thank you, Mel. Uh, Randy He, uh, thanks, uh, Mel and Bernard and county staff for coming here tonight. Um, sort of the age-old question about, uh, since you... Sort of the age-old question about, since you're looking at budget, how about increasing budget for road maintenance in Kekeha? As you just talked about roads. Some of them are really good, some of them are really bad. And Kekeha Road has had a flooding problem for ages. And it's really irritating after small rain, the road is flooded because every day you gotta go to the post office. So that Kekeha Road and the drainage is poor, so that's been an age-old problem. The other thing I kind of wanted to talk about was Office of, I don't know what you call it now, Emergency Management Center? I don't know what they're, if they looked at their operating procedures concerning fire watch issues with wildfire as well as other potential natural disasters. I remember we used to meet, you know, with them. But quite frankly, things are changing with climate change, things are drier, potential for fires. We see KIC shutting down some areas during potential fire. I'm just, I just think that there should be some really good coordination with the county and the utilities concerning potential hazards as well as information out to the public. You know, there was some information on that incident when that hurricane that was to the south of us and there were warnings that it was gonna be wind and and some dry fire conditions. But it was kind of blown off, poo-pooed a little bit because the hurricane was so far to the south. And I just think that the emergency management guys should get the word out to the public a little better. So it does fit into that county scenario. The other thing I kind of want to talk about is really probably not a county council issue, but probably crosses over into other areas as well. And that is, Kauai has not had a rifle range or shooting facility, public shooting facility since they closed the National Guard range down. So it's really neat, you know, you want to go shooting, keep it legal, you gotta get hunting license, and then you end up going in a hunting area. And probably illegal because if you want to go shoot a 22 up there, something small, you're not supposed to be hunting with a plane too. So you shouldn't be in an area. So you actually make law-abiding citizens into criminals because you don't have a facility for them to go do recreation, you know? I mean, we talk about parks and sports, you know, Pop Warner and things like that. But there are other sports that people on Kauai enjoy and shooting sports is one of them, which, and I don't know, it's been over 20 years since we haven't had access to a range, so. Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Let me get back to your KIMA question, your emergency management. You mentioned that back in the day, you folks were part of the discussions. Who was that, who would that be besides, which organization, who were-
All the, I don't know, KIC, was there, Kauai National, Kauai National?
Yeah, I know that they are, they do have a, you know, Lahaina changed everybody's mindset. And I know that, you know, in fact, Councilmember Billy Costa who was here earlier and he had to leave because of the sunshine law, he might be lurking out there someplace, but you know, he, since I got back on the council, he's been talking about fire mitigation and expanding fire mitigation and now that Lahaina happened.
The thing about it is that we used to get together, not so much with tsunamis, tsunamis were probably handled more with phone calls because tsunamis had short-term dangers. The hurricanes, we would, we would go in and make sure we do contact personnel or, you know, we'd actually leave the emergency manager, et cetera. So, and the communication was, you know, very good and we laid out our plans of how we're gonna shut down power, you know, the steps of it. So I'm not sure, I'm not in that anymore.
Yeah, they have a very active stakeholder group. But I, you know, your analogy or your, the hurricane, remember Iniki? I was a cop at the time and I went to work and they told us, no worry, it's far below. And then he took that 90-degree turn and whacked us hard, so. Yeah, we just, we do, we gotta, and I think from what I'm seeing at the administrative level at KIMA and because we get, you know, we get notices of when they meeting and they have been very robust discussions with the stakeholders now. And I know KIC is part of it and more so after Lahaina, but yeah, but if there's any, if you're not getting information-
Well, I think, you know, in the event, I see notices from KIC coming out saying potentially shut down power, actually, from the managing agency, not so much from the utilities, you know? Put the notice on the utility. I think the county, since they're part of the emergency management center here, I think they should put out the notice that potentially areas will be without power. And the more you do it, the more guys, you know, they think, okay, well, you better get something back on power. Nowadays, can't be wired because of minor changes, things are changing, you know? Guys, they have to see that machines and that, so you better buy some backup batteries.
Okay, I'm not gonna disagree.
Yeah, the same, the more you put it on, the more people become aware and it takes, you know, takes it off the utility.
Okay, and regarding the rifle range, you know, I know that was the mayor's, one of the mayor's priorities. You know, again, as I just mentioned, as far as infrastructure, you know, we got so many issues. This really comes down to funding and how would that function? Is the county be running it? You know, I did meet with some of the gun club owners or gun club members and said, you know, it would be, I think for me, the ideal situation would be the gun clubs come together, form an organization that will be able to run the range and membership dues and contests and tournaments and all of that stuff would help pay for the expenses. I think the partnership with the county could, number one, the county don't own land. We don't own land, but the state does. So the state, I mean, the county could definitely work in some fashion with the state, but who would fund it and manage it and run it? And right now, it's difficult when our list of deferred maintenance projects on this island is so huge. You're talking about so many, so many things that we gotta do it. But I know, last I talked to the mayor, well, a while back, you know, he was still trying to make that happen. Still trying to make that happen. I think we got a base representative here too. She's here as a resident, but you know, even Troy's here, they're listening and I should have introduced you. No, okay, she said no, but anyway. Yeah, you know, the base is probably difficult to get a public range in a military base, but-
Well, it's working with, like you said, but then you have all the members.
Yeah. I think, you know, like I said, the mayor, that is one of the mayor's priorities, so you know, we'll wait and see what proposal comes out. I get calls from people telling me, how come we don't own movie theater? Why don't the county put up a movie theater? I mean, I would love to. I'm not joking. How come you guys don't own movie theater? Well, because, right up here.
Councilmember, thank you for coming out. My name is Orpheus. Just a couple of things. Over in Waimea, the left-hand turn that goes right past the bridge into Corteva has been the site of several accidents. I know this year, I think there were about two. And the only thing, the only reason I know is because I work odd hours and I just happened to be there. And one of them, I think, was a total loss. And I think last year, I think there were four plus. But basically, it's, everyone knows that the speed limit is 35 right after you pass Gather, but like basically after you pass Wranglers, wide open.
So you're talking about the LeHui bound traffic, the left turn into Corteva?
Yeah, it's like, it's just, it's just a left turn right on the highway. And most people kind of like at the whatever, 6:30, 7:00 AM, when all those people are turning left to go to work, like everybody usually like goes right around. But because you also got a left-hand turn coming out of the Corteva site, the C Company site, like once in a while when people go around, the car that's trying to make a left turn, they just, they just head on collide into that. So I don't, I don't know, the shoulder's pretty wide there. I know there's rules and regulations about highway shoulders that falls under the highway administration, but that's, that's kind of, yeah, that 35 mile per hour sign kind of doesn't do nothing for nobody.
Okay, that, we'll send that request to the state highways. That is a state highway, but I can see how that can be a big problem right there.
And one other thing is that I know Waimea has a lot of, the island in general has a lot of older folks. And also there's a bunch of tourists in Waimea. There's that red dirt shirt store and they install the crossing lights that you press the button and then they flash. But on that red dirt shirt store, basically you can park on the street in front of the crosswalk. So if you're westbound or eastbound, or if you're westbound or eastbound, like usually in the afternoons coming off of like off base, like you can't see the tourists usually like behind the cars. It's a car, crosswalk, and then car. And like you just have a blind spot right there and usually like you don't catch them until like you're looking, you're looking across. I know it's a 25 mile per hour, but like I could just see somebody getting clipped out there. And maybe just like removing that first, I hate to tell somebody that you're losing a parking spot, but like maybe moving that parking spot on the side or something, so.
Yeah, I got it. So there's a parking, a vehicle parked right at the start of the crosswalk?
Exactly.
Okay, got it.
You know, I know that local parks are there prior to all these stops, like I said, that's why I'm in town. So that's what I'm hearing, but what happens is they press the button and they walk. Like in New York City, like, but they like change it and they're gone. Like they don't, like, it's like their cars, like half of those stops, and they're like, they walk, so.
Okay, got it.
I don't know, like, just putting my words like even verticals, like white holes with reflective stickers on them or something? They're kind of like, you know, need that part started, I know it costs money to do curb bump outs or anything like that. But I could do like a little cheap, you know, fifty, sixty dollars or something, or something down on the street right there.
Or if they leave first open, if we could get second, is that a problem?
Yeah, I think the obstruction of the crosswalk is the problem. I mean, that is bad. And I, you know, when we travel and you drive and you're not familiar with a crosswalk, sorry, it happens all the time. Or you see somebody in front of your car in a crosswalk. But if you're not familiar, you're gonna miss them. So, I mean, I hate giving up parking spots too, but it's even worse when somebody get hit. Okay, we'll send that over as a recommendation as well to the state.
I did have a fun last thing, so I know the council does an amazing job of pushing minutes and ordinances, especially the budget. But I don't know if anybody has actually taken the time to look at the budgets or proposals. Some of these are like hundreds of pages PDFs, so they're pretty, they're pretty intense. And a lot of them, I can see a lot of them being lost, they're like, it's kind of like, you know, redevelopment of a website, like a whole, like kind of briefings there, we can make proposals to take more accessible for regular people, where it's kind of like, here's the proposed budget and here's the actual, and then maybe it's like just some big ticket items of what people want to track and how much you need to spend there, just because right now, this video, I'm sorry. I can dig through them, but like, they are-
I know, I know, I know.
I just, I still let people know how much you need to spend there, like be able to like think better. Like, you know, the trash can parts of maybe you could be parting for someone else, that's-
Yeah, you know, like I think Maui does project-based budgeting, so versus the line item budget. We get line item budgets, so every single line, that's what we go through. And as you can see, I'm not looking forward to that, but we do. I don't know how else we can make it. You know, we do, when we have our budget hearings, we have what we call a plus-minus sheet. So it basically shows all of the items that there's a change, either increase or decrease, and we can take a look at which areas of the county budget is more than it was last year. That's available. But as far as the budget, I, again, I'm not sure how we would be able to make it more palatable or I mean, if there was a way, we would be looking at that same document as the council.
I'm just thinking, Mr. Ball, from County, I think, maybe a pie chart that's broken into a big sector, a thousand or a thousand-
Yeah, okay, so every department, every department that comes up to the county for their budget review comes with a really nice presentation with the pie charts. It's really, really good. I'm not sure if that is made available. We, I believe we can possibly make that available. That is the shortcut to reading the budget. And that one is really nice. It has the pie charts, it has, or some departments use graphs, but it's a much more visual presentation of the budget. So we can, I see Christian writing away, you run out of ink yet? We brought plenty of pens, so you get plenty of ink. Maybe we can make, somehow make that available on the website. That would be much easier for the public to consume because that budget is a nightmare. It's a nightmare. But I prefer that over project-based because the council has an opportunity to see the individual lines. Otherwise, things get lost and you, it's hard. That's a good suggestion, thank you. Yes, sir?
Thanks, Chris. Can you have two questions first? What's going on with the Waimea 400?
The what, what?
The Waimea 400 project?
They're going through the environmental process, they're doing the community planning. That's still in the process of what that's going to be used for.
Any idea like on the timeline, when activity is gonna start?
I don't, I don't, but we can, we can, we can definitely get that for you. I'm not sure, Bernard, you're familiar, right? They're doing, maybe Randy, do you have that? Randy's real active in, I think, in that.
Yeah, so, Randy Francisco, I attended the county's-
Can you pass the mic over? So I can make sure your comments-
Hi, Randy Francisco. I attended the county's Waimea 400 community meeting a couple of weeks ago. So you should remember Waimea 400 and you can get information on the updates. And they continue to accept people submitting information on their survey because it's not black and white, they're still accepting information. So that's the latest update.
Yeah, I wish I had more for you. Oh, I'm sorry, Troy. Was that, did you raise your hand? Oh, give him the mic. Thank you, Troy.
Hi, Troy Tanningon. So I can add a little bit more. The study is actually, the project manager who's doing- doing all the contracting work to get the consultants on board uh, is, is under Public Works Admin, my area, so I get updates kind of frequently, so as far as status, um, we're in the process of amending our consulting contract to add scope to it. Uh, fortunately, we got, uh, an earmark from, um, Senator Schatz. The money's coming through the National Oceanic Administration Association. So Noah's, um, gonna be administering the money, passing it on to the county. And, um, funding amount comes out to about one point two million. So that, that money is gonna fund all the environmental studies um, that are required to develop that site. Uh, there's gonna be, uh, a step in a process where, um, um, the administration's gonna come back to the community and share the information um, as they move forward with, you know, looking for, um, uh, or developing the site more and providing more information, so. We're probably looking at about another year, you know, before we have all the information from this study that, that we're about to take, um, have our consultant start on, and, um, once, um, like I said, once that's, once that takes place, then we'll come back to the community again.
And then that puts the sewer, that's right to the four hundred. That sewer plant, that's right there.
Yeah, so the, the sewer plant, um...
Somebody said they're gonna put it up the hill.
Yeah, we, so the sewer plant is, it's in a good spot right now. Um, but if there's renovations that's required and, you know, for that plant to actually serve the future needs of the community, it's gonna have to expand. Recently, uh, the International Building Code, which is a building code that governs um, vertical construction, even in here, here in Hawaii, um, revised the requirements that, um, for facilities like the treatment plant, they're gonna have to comply with, um, uh, elevation requirements that, that apply to facilities that are impacted by tsunamis, so it's likely that it's gonna be infeasible to further develop and expand in the current location. Uh, so that's one of the things we're gonna be looking at too, is also, um, uh, requirements for a new wastewater treatment plant site. Everything is very conceptual at this point. We're still, uh, trying to learn more about how that building code applies. And if, if there's a way that, uh, uh, we could exempt the treatment plant, but right now it doesn't look good, you know, as far as, um, it qualifying for an exemption, so. A starting process will also be involved with that Waimea treatment plant. That's all.
Thank you, Troy. Don't leave. Over here, baby.
Aloha, mai kako, um, Kaua from Waimea. Um, so in addition to the Waimea four hundred question, uh, it's like Westside residents who are pretty vested in, uh, the workshops. They did the West Kaua Plan workshops a couple of years ago. And then a lot of us spoke up about the things that was put into the plan, which is, I think like a sixty-year plan for the, for the, like, West Kaua and Waimea. And then, uh, the Waimea four hundred coming up with the same kind of model, like they do with this, uh, survey. And the first initial meeting for the Waimea four hundred was actually in the theater, and I think, I think Randy was there too. Um, and, and from there, we were able to do a, a survey on what the community wanted. And so they ranked the PBNR, I think, they were able to con, compile everything, and they found that like the Westside community wanted more rent, uh, opportunities for our kids. We wanted more agriculture. We wanted all these things. But the, the meeting that we had the quickest was for, uh, low-income development of thirty-two, the thirty-two acres at Waimea four hundred. And so I think for me as a resident, I wanna know, how did, how did housing trump the needs and the wants of our community, which was initially, uh, rent and opportunities for our kids to grow in, in sports and all of that? Because our Westside community actually tried over ten, fifteen years ago to, to do a Westside complex. And that was like the Ishihara family, and so, um, just the process. And I know I'm kind of sounding like I'm all over the place, but what, the one thing that I feel like is hard for us Westsiders is the process. Like they, they do all these workshops, the, like, planning and housing. And we do all of these workshops. We don't really put it out there, so you'll get maybe some of us here that show up for these things. And it's not like, we're not using, I feel, social media to get the word out, to get, um, our residents actively engaged. But ultimately, my first thing is, why wasn't our initial, like, wants and needs actually heard? And then why are we moving to develop like four hundred houses? And that was at the last meeting that we went to at Waimea Canyon. They spoke about like potential housing. We're not moving really in that direction, but we're doing an EIS. So there was, for some reason, there was families there like thinking that they were gonna apply for housing. So ultimately, like, why aren't we focusing on the wants and needs? Because ultimately, the West Kaua infrastructure cannot hold any more development. Not in its current, like, stature, not in anything wastewater landfill. We cannot hold that. So I think in addition to like fine-tuning the process for our community engagement, I wanna know why we aren't being heard on our initial concerns, wants and needs.
Don't apologize, don't apologize. And you're not all over the place. I, I'll be honest with you, you know, Waimea four hundred, I was gone for four years in the council, so I'm not really familiar with, uh, with the plan. I, I mean, I haven't, to be honest, I never read the plan. Um, I understood that it was gonna be, uh, housing was a big component of that. That's just what I'm told. But, you know, I can go back and take a look. As, as Troy just said, though, right now, there, there's such in preliminary stages. The environmental issue's gotta be clarified first and to determine what can and cannot be done on that site. Uh, I, I'm very familiar with the, the sports complex plan, because I went to several of those meetings at the Ishihara group. And I, back then, Waimea four hundred wasn't even a thought, right? It was pre-Waimea four hundred. So I, I don't know if there was a connection. I won't follow up. If, if that plans for the sports complex on the Westside was supposed to transfer over to Waimea four hundred, uh, I, I'm not sure how usable all that four hundred acres are. I mean, I'm hearing that too.
Right, so I think like personally, um, some, some capacity, I feel like the monkey figures all the way to do it, like it's a monkey on the other side. Um, but just want to be sure that we are like putting forward, like, Waimea, the West Kaua plan is a good thing. Like, we got a plan, there's great things, like for the Westside. And I, and I don't know how true this is, but I, I've been meeting people from the Highlands, that it's important to me, that there's a lot of, a lot of, you know, things that's needed for us. And that's a good thing for me, because being generational in Waimea, I think just, you know, hoping that was, uh, I was ready to say that, hey, tourism may not always be, well, we, we need to look elsewhere. We need to look elsewhere, as we said. I, for, right, all those things, and so I just want to be sure that, that monkey process is coming through. Like, we know that's what you kind of, a lot of us need, and, and with the workshop, and everything. And, and, and then again, you know, honestly, I thought I could check on, like, hey, you know, our community, or we had that feedback, that I feel like a lot of people wrote in a pen, and so, you know, I think so, but I do feel that, and that was, I thought, what is housing, planning, whatever it is, like, I think community is making a difference. I know we should be here, so if we can follow.
That, that is, that is exactly what a community process supposed to be. Um, so, I mean, I'm sure that the council, whoever the council is at that time, will be following that process. Yeah.
I think too, to dovetail off of what Kaua said and the gentleman, um, in the corner over there, it's really hard to be involved and engaged, and we feel like there's not a great dissemination of information in a very easy and accessible way to the community. I mean, these, these meetings, we rarely hear about until the last minute. So I don't know if that's like, I don't know, I hate to say it, but social media or otherwise, it would be really nice to feel like there was an easier way to share and get people, particularly in our age demographics, a little bit more involved. And then to make it more palatable, so that we feel like we understand what the process is.
Let, let me, let me just plug Ho'ukei real quick. If you guys have social media, make sure you follow Ho'ukei. Their new, uh, Executive Director Allegra is, has just redesigned the, the direction of Ho'ukei. Um, I just started, believe it or not, I'm almost ashamed to say, but I just started following their social media platforms, and they have a lot of information on that. Uh, as far as this town hall meetings, we did send out the press release to the media. Um, I don't know if you know anybody who worked at the Garden Island, but, you know, they don't cover Kauai stories. They don't cover Kauai stories, so I'm not, you know, whatever, so, uh, we don't control that. I mean, we, we, all we can do, and I put it out on my social media pages, but it's, it's difficult to get the word out. We rely on the, the coconut wireless, uh, to get the word out, but Ho'ukei is an amazing venue. Not only county council stuff, not only county stuff, but a lot of the community events that are, uh, important to communities are on their pages. Um, on their Instagram especially. I don't know who's, is that you, Max, doing all of that stuff or what, man? But, um, you know, it's kind of, like I said, I hate punting things away, but, you know, all we can do is, we can do the press releases, and it's the media that puts it out.
No, um, plan, sorry, the county actually has Plan Kaua as an Instagram that they use when they were soliciting all of us to engage in the West Kaua process, the planning process. If they would use that, that would be key. But like, cause there's so many people that jump on, so it's called Plan Kaua, but they never use it.
That's good, Instagram.
Yeah, it's a county Instagram, so they should use that. That would help us.
Plan, Plan Kaua, I didn't know about that.
Yeah, it's, it's there, because the West Kaua plan was in the, in the county, you know, you put it out, you know.
Got it. Thank you for that. See, we even learn coming to these things, you know? Oh, I'm sorry.
Hi, I'm Taryn.
Hi, really?
Um, here from Keikahua. Um, first off, thank you for all of this around the island. I think that is amazing that you're coming to us. Not always can we come to you guys, so I appreciate even the time wise. Um, so thank you. I do believe that our county council does have a lot of power versus some of the county of Kauai, which we, who has the accountability. And then we have the people on Kauai who have the effect from all of their causes. With that said, I'd like to focus on a few items that I feel are in our control or the county council control. As we all know how many layers and silos are built in a large democratic government. I'd like to begin our focus with our beloved Napolico. Despite being inaccessible, Nualolokai's reef is dead. Despite the sunscreen act that was passed in twenty twenty-one and implemented on January first, twenty twenty-three, which bans the sale of all sunscreen with those harmful chemicals, are still currently for sale on Kauai shelves with the known harmful effects for our marine environment as well as our ecosystem. This, we all know Nualolokai Reef is dead, and it needs our help. If all of our county officials, I wish all of you would be able to hear this, would have, um, notified officials who have control of this sale and advocate for the ramifications. I believe your voice would be very effective. I also would like to, um, talk about our, the, um, how important the water is and the impact it has for Maoka to Makai. The weather and the climate is not in our control, but the perennial stream management is something we can control. Currently, there are many jurisdictions involved in our three hundred-plus streams statewide over the five islands, which makes this issue not only a large scale, but critical due to the many beneficiaries, including our Limukohu at the end, at the end, you know, at the River Mount. In April of twenty eighteen, we experienced Koloa flooding due to a table blocking a culvert. In Hanalei, it had its own issues with the marshland being altered, possibly causing the overflow into Hanalei Town. And in Waialua, large amounts of natural debris was dammed downstream. Notices and alleged fines to owners alongside the streams Maoka of Waialua River, including the feeding streams, um, were cited, but nothing was sustained after that. Our county of Kauai Planning Department has received amazing awards for their coastal zone management and SMA development. As our oldest island, we have the most streams, which stream management is very critical to protect our, to protect our communities during severe weather, but also to control the little water that is available in our aquifer. Our stream manage, our streams are being choked by our overgrowth. Each weed, tree, and plant deplete our stream. While the rich, rich at growth for privacy, we struggle to gather at the mounts of the stream and witness a disappearance. Another accident, another issue for me is public access on Kauai has been very complicated. As a hunter, we only have access to two percent of Kaua. As a shoreline fisherman, we only have access to maybe thirty percent of the island. As we attract to the rich in our sleepy, private island setting, we must support our locals who perpetuate our culture. Currently, Kauai has an ordinance to ensure public access for subdivision development. The public has been the recent victim and lost crucial coastal access on the northeast side when a wealthy landowner bought hundreds of acres seizing public access as they developed under the subdivision threshold. I don't know what the vision we have developed for Kaua, but Oahu million-dollar homes in Kahala, Port Lake, Kailua, to name a few, have a lot of public, multiple public access areas. I beg that our voted county councils demand our county of Kauai to ensure public access is never lost and to ensure a sustainable future. As we wrap up, some of the items that we can talk about with control are bigger, sorry, these bigger focus items for me. I plead that we must support sustainable housing. Having a cap on the type of house that is being permitted to build is the key to sustaining our island, our little island for generations to come. I look back at the development in Keikahua Gardens in the seventies, Waimea and Eleele in the eighties, and even Hanapepe and Eleele in the nineties. That development has provided our teachers, our nurses, our doctors, our first responders, and critical roles to sustain our current community now. If our county of Kaua continues to permit million-dollar homes or even support development like Hokua Place that attracts fancy to be built, we will not be able to sustain our island. We currently, as you already have mentioned, have a crisis staffing these critical community roles, and we must cap what is being built. This is in our control. A great example is Elopaila Road. We have allowed and permitted so many TVRs and, and million-dollar homes, which replace our old pool and homes Makai of Elopaila. And then Maoka of Elopaila had unimaginable effects when their increases, when they couldn't pay their increased tax because it doesn't balance their fixed retirement incomes. Forcing retired plantation workers in our Kupuna to sell as they cannot afford their land tax. We must take control of what we can do to ensure we reverse these facts of our locals leaving Kauai and being replaced with the rich who barely ever contribute to our community betterment. If we will not, if we will not allow a building taller than a coconut tree on the island, we must demand neighborhood cap and island, and an island cap. For all the homes that are already surpassed the neighborhood or island cap that we set, maybe at two million dollars, should be subject to an eighty percent land tax. The price of paradise should be felt by the rich. Sorry, that was just my bigger rock. Like, small rocks we can talk about.
Max!
The small rocks will never leave the ending.
No, listen, I, I, listen, I, it's like, yeah, we're on the same page. Let me just talk real quick. I'll try to cover as much as I can. The stream maintenance management, I mean, obviously, the state, uh, is, is, is responsible for that. I did wanna talk a few things here. I wrote as quick as I could. Uh, okay, public access, first of all. Um, uh, myself and Billy again, working on, I got, I got a list from planning with all the public accesses that we're supposed to have. There's a lot. So we are working with planning. In fact, planning just sent their first violation notice Friday, uh, to a landowner who...
In Kilaua?
Yes. That's one of them. Uh, we're working, we, we're gonna be working on about a dozen of them. That, these traditional accesses that we have lost.
Yes.
So we are, and the, the planning is fully in support. The county attorney is full in support. So we will start to see some of those. We, we're doing this first one first to see how it goes, but we are putting this list, and it's not just Makai, but Maoka access as well. So just stay tuned for that one, because it's something we just started doing.
But I think what you're talking about is what is already in for subdivision development? I'm talking about where people are developing, like, if we're looking what happened on the east, the northeast side. That was one large landowner that developed under the subdivision threshold that doesn't require public access anymore. So we need to redo our permitting policies that will still require public access, because that is, you know, high-end Limukohu access, and now we lost it.
Yeah, I, I, I'm not sure what, what legal grounds we have to, again, depending on, we're going after the traditional accesses that... We're going after the traditional accesses that were lost right now, because those are easy.
Well, we had traditional access, but once he bought.
Yeah, that traditional access doesn't go away. It doesn't go away. So once the, the access is established, it doesn't go away. Regardless of, the case that we're working on right now, the, the new owner is.
From the subdivision, cause so when, on those ones, I, I, I sit on open space commission. And so those ones are when they, when they develop that subdivision, those accesses were granted.
Correct.
So, but these are just public, you know, like they regular, they had a road down to Larsin's or wherever that was. I'm not from that side of the island and now the landowner came in and blocked that road.
Okay.
So there was no plan from that development that created an access like the one in Kilauea does for Maoka and.
Yeah, in that case, we would have to go, and you know this, right? Open space and basically eminent domain and, and purchase that through eminent domain. So that's.
But, but now we're on the reactive. Why aren't we proactive? Cause now we have to be reactive and purchase land from taxpayer, from the point five percent. Why are we not proactive and creating, um, rules so we get that from the front end? We're getting that access prior to the sale.
The planning department, when the planning commission, when they get their subdivision committees, they have that authority to demand. Pretty much whatever they want within, within reason. And access is one of them. So, um. Councils, the council does not get involved. We, we don't, that's.
But I think you guys can help with the, you know, like just like I think, um, Nakamura was very beneficial in helping with our SMAs. And I think our county council is, would be, you know, utilizing, utilizing their political platform, help to develop these type of, um. You know, administrative rules that can help us. And I think that's where you guys have the power, is where you guys can, um, get your connections. Like what Nakamura did with the SMAs and are to help pave that way. We can help pave something for, you know, stream management or something.
I, I, I got you a hundred percent. I mean, again, you know, we, we draft the legislation, but the. Kauai is really unique, unlike Honolulu where the council has the final say in subdivisions and zoning and. Uh, we, we only get, only when someone changes zoning is when it comes to the county council. But I, I agree with you and I think that if there is a development or there is a developer that's going to the planning commission for. Uh, a subdivision permit or any development for that matter, the planning commission is the, is the agency. I got you though, and, and that's something we gotta pay a close.
We're looking at the footprint.
We don't get the, yeah, we don't get the.
We've just had a person purchase, you know, and then it can happen again.
Yeah, I mean, if.
And we have no access now.
You know of these areas, just let me know and we can follow up.
We all know Pila, I'm talking about this Pila. We all know this, you know, billionaire that came in and we lost all this access.
Okay. Yeah, we'll follow up on that. I mean, I, I am very upset about what, what has happened. And we just gotta go back and try to reclaim what we lost and, and you know, some may get challenged.
Jump when we have to pay from our taxpayers, you know, like that point five percent. This is so much better if we can get this on the front end.
I agree, I agree.
And not pay the point five percent.
I agree. I, I mean, I would love to have the charter amendment so that the council does the subdivision agree, subdivision process. I would love that. I think it's. Cause commissioners don't get elected.
Well, this is under subdivision, so they're not, this is all under the subdivision threshold. So then all of these are required to, to come in play.
Right.
Because they're under the subdivision.
It never gets to the council, is what I'm trying to say. If we had the system like Oahu does, then it would come to the council. Cause commissioners don't get elected. Understand? They don't get elected, right? Council members get elected. So we do stupid things, we just get unelected, right? Commissioners don't get unelected. They, they don't. And, and that's the process. Real quick, coastal access and the, I went on a site visit last week, not sure, in. Wow. I get the pictures here. If you guys, so we, we're gonna be recalling out the, the shoreline bill. Cause we, at one time we had the strongest shoreline bill in the country. And we're having issues now where planning department is giving away exemptions and. That's gotta stop. One house, they built the Lanai and it's actually on the beach. I like, I wanted to just, I'm not gonna say what I wanted to do, but, but. So we gotta tighten it back up and we gotta take away the ability for these exemptions to be granted. That's crazy. Um.
Sorry, I had on long days.
I know, I know. It's alright though. TVRs, you know, Keikaha, it bothers me when I hear about the TVR. I live in a Waialua House Lots, we get TVRs in a Waialua House Lots. Who the heck would wanna rent a TVR in a Waialua House Lots? Ooh, I mean, no, I guess it's walking area to the beach, but. So the state has a law that says the counties cannot stop the, the TVR use in residential areas. We just cannot. We did pass a law back in two thousand and eight that, or eight, eight, that banned any future TVRs outside of the visitor destination area, which meant residential areas. But all of those people that were operating in residential areas prior to that law being passed was grandfathered in. So they were allowed to maintain as long as they keep it in the use and so forth. And we have been trying for a long time. Bernard was a mayor, the councils, the mayors got together, we're trying to get the legislature to allow us. To end the use of those non-conforming uses of grandfathered people when they sell the house. So when you sell your property, you lose that TVR. Sorry, that's the only way we're gonna, we, I mean, that way at some point, TVRs will only be in visitor destination areas. So it's up again. Luke Evansland had sponsored a bill and it's still moving. I don't know if it'll pass this year, but if, if the state gives us the authority to do that. Then we will introduce a bill that will say, when you sell your TVR, that you're not in a VDA, you lose the ability to vacation rent your house. You know what that's gonna do to the value of that property? Cause the value isn't in the wood and the land, the value is in the permit. Once we revoke that and they cannot, when they sell, they're selling a house now. They're not selling a business. Yeah, we probably gonna get sued. So what? County attorney said, we're good. And I think we're good because when you sell, you've already made your money. You're done. So, you know, again, you know, a lot of these things, you, we gotta get our legislature, our Kauai delegation to support because we're, we're getting wiped out.
I think the biggest on that was just to, I, I use the TVR as an example of how important a housing, or, or, uh, uh, cap on a house should be. We shouldn't be allowing four million house, uh, four million dollar homes to be built because those, those residents will not be our future teachers. They're not gonna be contributing to our society. You know, so the, we should only have, we should only allow or permit homes at two million dollars. You know, anything else, we should make them pay that rest of the gap and collect that.
Yeah, well.
My taxes just went up in Keikaha.
Couple of things, couple of things real quick. Um, as far as the, the, the real property taxes. This year, we're gonna, for the first time, we're gonna be able to have tiers in our classes. So the TVRs now will be paying the same as resort. So that's gonna upset a lot of people, but to me, there are resorts. There are many resorts and they should pay the resort fee because the impact of the neighborhoods. Is actually worse than the impact that hotel puts on a neighborhood, you know? Uh, and then the tiers, the higher valued properties will, will, the way they're structured is, you know, so the first X amount of value will get charged at the lower rate. The next level will get charged, the difference will get charged at a higher rate and then the upper end, high end properties will be charged at the highest rate. So they're gonna feel it this year and, and again, it's not because we, we just trying to punish the, the rich people. We, we just wanna make sure that we're not punishing our local people. The other thing that we'll be proposing is that, because the last two years, assessments went through the roof. And, and the tax bills have gone sky high. And yes, the residential homeowner, owner occupant has a three percent cap, but it's a three percent cap off of the assessment. See, if your assessment went up more than three percent, uh, you just got whacked with, with a big tax increase. So. We're hoping that when we, by putting the TVRs up, we generate more revenue that way. By increasing the resort rate up, we'll generate more revenue that way. We can offset the residential taxpayers by lowering their tax rate to a level where you will see no tax increase in, in the future, in the next year. Uh, but we gotta make up the revenue someplace and that'll be made up at the TVR level, the resort level and the high end homes. So this is where you guys can help, is when, when that comes out, we need you guys to flood the council and say, yes, support that, support that, support that. Because it's gonna be difficult, gonna have a lot of opposition, the realtors and everybody's gonna say, no, you can't do that. Yeah, we can, because we have, you're right. We should not, Kauai should not be someone else's Disneyland, period. And, and I think this council, I don't think you'll see any opposition to that.
I just think we should not allow more than, you know, homes more than two million dollars no belonging.
Well, you know.
Cause they're not gonna support our society.
I understand, but there's something called a constitution that we gotta abide by.
If we don't allow a house to be hired in a coconut tree, there should be, you know, some kind of way where we're capping the, the, of that building permit.
And we actually do limit house sizes based on percentage of the, the, the property. There, there's a lot of things, but we cannot put a cap on how much you can spend on your house. If you can build, you wanna spend ten million on a fifteen hundred square foot house, do go for it, but. There, there is constitutional restrictions that we gotta abide by.
So you couldn't do a neighborhood cap or an island cap?
As far as like numbers?
Like this is your, the, the, you know, if this is our Keikaha neighborhood, what would be the, you know, to save the neighbor next to us? Because grandma is on a fixed income next to us and here, you know, the, especially after COVID, we've experienced this so bad after COVID. Because people have been buying it for onsite and sale and then they renovated and now they, you know, increased our taxes like crazy.
Well, that's where the tier is gonna come into play, right? I think.
But my house never get renovations, but theirs did and I gotta pay more now.
Everybody. And that's the wrong part.
And that's where I'm saying we should have caps because I cannot afford it.
Caps on the assessments you're talking about.
Well, caps on what they can build because I cannot afford, that my neighbor put up on two million dollar house, now I gotta pay way more taxes. I mean, nice, my house might have increased in value, but to live here, I cannot afford those taxes.
Yeah, no, you're right. You, you are right. I, I just don't know about capping. Uh. The only thing that we have the power on the county council is the tax rates. But we're hoping that the tier system would fix that.
Or maybe even make that tier system even more so it, they wouldn't, the rich will have to feel the price of paradise.
I think that's the plan. We'll see in a few weeks. Anyone else?
Hello, my name's Tina Sakamoto. Um, thank you for facilitating this town hall meeting. To air issues affecting not only Keikaha, but the west side. And the issue I'd like to bring forward is an island wide one, and that's a rental affordable housing. Now, um, the county in two thousand and six, I believe it was, I have a, I've done a fifteen year, nineteen year study. On the affordable housing program and basically, the county is asking a landowner to rent their house. At a specified rate for at least one year and they would enjoy a lower tax rate. It used to be called homeowners, now I think it's the residential homeowner occupied.
Yeah, owner occupied.
Owner occupied. And the rent is based on HUD's percentage. Right now it's ninety. So in two thousand and six, it was a hundred and twenty percent and now it's down to ninety percent. And that means when a man testified last year, he rents to subsidize housing through the HUD. And he's getting more rent allowed under that program than what the county allows. So when he applied for the county, he was rejected. So something's wrong here. We're trying to help people stay on the island. The HUD is helping subsidize housing, but the county program. They're offering less to a landlord when there's increasing maintenance costs. Uh, if you look at this year, two thousand twenty-five, the county in this program is allowing less rent than the year before. Now, what owner is going to decrease their rent when there's an increasing maintenance and taxes? So I've addressed this to the council over this last nineteen years. The most recent email was sent today and if anybody wants to look at the, the study, they can. But, um, basically I asked the council again to review the study. To, um, increase the percent at least equal to what the house, uh, the HUD percentages of medium income. And, or increase it. How are you going to get landlords to offer their house if they're, you're telling them, okay, we'll pay you this amount. But next year, you gotta reduce your rent. This is not gonna work. I've already talked to some people. One house we lost in Poishu. She wanted to rent a very, very nice place to a local family, but she cannot afford to pay the maintenance with a reduced rent. Another one in Elele, pulled two houses out of the program. And went to the fair market housing, which is a lot more. So this program is, um, needs some revision. And it's really not conducive to landlords to rent under this program. So I've addressed it many, many times, then again, sent the study to the, the council. The response has been, it's too late. It's not too late. You have already got the percentages and you've already printed the application for two thousand twenty-five. So you need to take action. If this program is really meant to promote affordable housing, rental housing. Then you need to step up and make it work. Thanks.
Just real quick, the HUD, when you talk about the HUD, HUD allows for more?
Yes, a man testified. He regularly rents his house on the HUD subsidized program. And when he went to apply for the county program, they said that HUD's rent was higher than the county program, so he didn't qualify.
And that HUD being the hundred and twenty percent?
No, it started a hundred and twenty percent. In two thousand and six, it's down to ninety percent.
I know the county is ninety. What, how does a HUD just, what is their rate? How did they?
Well.
I, I, I can, I can turn it off, right?
Okay, yeah.
I know we've had this discussion with housing, in fact, Kipokai and I, um, yeah, okay.
They have a payment standard and they add a percent, like a hundred and ten percent. So that's what HUD's allowing, but the county at ninety percent, it's less than what HUD is. So that's not helping our working families who wanna stay here, maybe save and buy a home here. It's not working.
Got it. I would agree that it should be equivalent to the HUD rate, you know?
The HUD or higher.
The, yeah, okay. Right now, because the market rate is so much higher, um. But, but, but it was eighty percent in the past. It was eighty percent because we, we didn't wanna give the tax benefit to people that were renting their homes out at a high rate. Wanted to really focus that on the, on the, on the lower income. But today's numbers, it's just a whole different time and the market now is, you know, three thousand dollars a month. For thirty-five hundred dollars a month for three bedroom, one bath. I, I mean, I see it and.
There's no stability for a landlord if he's got a rent. The next year, they're telling me it's rated for less. Why is that the problem? Is it the market?
Yeah, I think we lost, I think housing told me that they lost, uh, not housing, but finance, they lost participants last year. Which is not good. Thank you.
Hi, again. Um, does the county or the administration have a plan to aid residents on like the septic conversion? That's supposed to happen by twenty fifty?
Um, no.
Oh, okay.
The feds gave the states money, the states gave the counties money and, um. Yeah, it, it has not been made available at this time. That money is in the housing department. They're managing those funds. What we are doing is in fact, we have, I know Troy guys are gonna be coming up, but I'm not sure when to discuss the sewer plans for the island. Uh, council member Kagawa is trying to get the legislature to number one, remove that fifty, twenty fifty deadline. But it's gonna be very difficult to force people to get into a septic system. And I just found out that one of, uh, one of our constituents went to get a building permit to build a, a little gym for her and her husband in the house. It's just basically extend, no bathroom, no bedroom and, and the department health said you gotta put a septic tank. Even if you're not adding one toilet, which I think is foolish, cause now we're gonna make them spend fifty, sixty grand on a septic. And then five or ten years down the line, come back and say, now we're gonna whack you with sewer connection. So, uh, we're trying to. Ross is trying to work with the, the state legislature to work on that, that bill, but as of this time, no, we do not have a, an assistance program.
Yeah, cause I think the cost alone would be a barrier for most people in, in just this community alone, not even other communities, but this one alone.
Yeah, I mean, Keikaha is on the list, I think Troy. Keikaha is one of the first communities that will, that the, that you guys are looking at for sewer.
Yeah, we actually have Keikaha considered one of those things.
Yeah, so Keikaha will probably be first, followed by the North Shore, I think, you know. Waialua House Lots is probably number eight or nine, so I'm gonna have to pay that sixty grand at some point. I don't think I'll be here in twenty fifty, so somebody gonna have to put that doggone thing in my. You know, the cesspool, septic. You know, the cesspool, septic tank, cesspool, septic tank, you know? What the heck is the difference, right?
Tina Sakamoto again. It was just a quick, um, I guess, uh, inquiry on the proposed tax rates that you're working on. And you said there would be tiers. My concern is what if there's a family that's inherited a house and because of its location, the price is increased? Are they gonna be subject, is there some way to grandfather these type of properties instead of increasing their, um, tax rate?
Well, again, owner occupants will all be owner occupants. So regardless of, of, uh, the value, they're gonna, they're gonna get the lower tax rate and the cap.
But the cap will be on the assessment.
Right.
And the assessment is really high because of the surrounding houses, it's not gonna benefit them.
No, and that's, so what I'm saying is that I'm hoping that this council will lower the tax rate so that the, the net impact to the tax bill will be flat. You know, you know what I'm saying? Cause we can only control the rate, we don't, we don't control assessment.
I'm just hoping that the family generational homes aren't affected with a high tax rate just because they live in an area where the houses are expensive.
Yeah, and again, if they live in the house, they'll get the benefit of the, the owner occupant exemption or the lower tax rate. There's also a generational, uh, exemption if, if it's a home that was lived in for 10 years, I believe. You qualify for that lower tax rate as well and you're protected from, from these ridiculous assessments because somebody bought a $20 million house that was actually worth 800,000, you know? It's what happened today. So it's happening today.
Uh, I know, I just wanna, I know we're past time, but just Orpheus here, real quick question. So, uh, lady who just left and, um, she just shared that, that great speech. Uh, one thing that I picked up from this, um, is access to information. Like I'm not on, on an open committee like she is, she's doing, she's done the most. Um, and I, you know, just hearing about, you know, the percentage of access for hunters and streams and all that stuff. Um, like I know the county is doing a great, amazing job with the county website and the redesign and, I, I mean, if you just go on the county website, kawai.gov, you can see all the news blasts of, you know, the accidents and water service shutdown. But for example, like I, I couldn't find this meeting right on the first page of like 5:30 PM. Um, I had to like dig, I had to dig through into the website to find it. And maybe some of the kupuna who might not be as tech savvy might not find those things. Um, a suggestion, and I hate giving suggestions because they mean money.
That's what this is for.
And they mean money, but it's, uh, maybe putting those things where people gather naturally. So for example, there's a bulletin board in Waimea Big Save, but it's over like right by the, the water, uh, the water filter. But like most people just park, walk right past it and go right into Big Save. But like, I know Big Save is a private corporation and all that stuff, but like maybe a discussion of allowing the county to put things right in people's faces, maybe at the checkout line of a TV screen or something that like allows people to be like, oh, that's happening, oh, I didn't know. Um, and maybe just signs about like other things like, you know, the, the richness of Kauai with rivers and, you know, the, the way like over at Anini, they got the sign about like Anini, Poipu, all these places, about the rip, the rip current and all that stuff. Maybe signs by the rivers, um, that the county puts up. I know it's the state's responsibility, but the river's on Kauai. Um, and maybe just some, some signs that like allow people to learn a little bit more instead of like coconut wireless about Waimea 400, coconut's wireless about, you know, Zuckerberg buying X amount of things. Um, and maybe, I don't know, a bigger thing that talked about housing, um, maybe the, the county or the council proposing a zoning bylaw reform, that's, that's a big endeavor. But just like I was saying about the budget, which is detailed in line items, that's just numbers, but the zoning bylaw, the zoning ordinance is straight up like Chinese. Like it is, it is just real, real dense. I, I don't know if there's a way to start that big project of how to make it understandable, accessible and available for people and the permits and the processes as opposed to like somebody showing up, trying to make a, a small little gym and then finding out XYZ has to happen. Um, and that's a big project. One last thing, this county, you're taking, you're up here taking punches and suggestions and all that stuff. Um, what about like reps from the planning departments being present at these meetings? Who actually, you know, you would interface with in the future? How about them being present here because they also play a big role in a lot of these things?
Let me start with that one first. They're bound by the same sunshine law that we are, so I mean, they, they could send one or two members if they wanted to. Again, I cannot tell them to come. Um, everyone's aware of the meetings, I, I'd probably be here if I was the planning commissioner, I'd probably be at every single one, but, um, that's entirely up to them. You know, again, making the website more, more, um, user friendly, I think. I like the new design, but it's still far from where I'd like to see it, you know? I think it needs to be more. I was trying to find the, um, um, speed hump application form today and I, and I couldn't. So I think, I think Troy, you got the request to send one over. But things like that, you know, we can do a better job. As far as this meeting's here, I'll own that one because it would have been very simple for me to have our staff produce flyers and get it out. I just didn't do it. Um, I, I just assumed the press release was sufficient. But again, we all learn from these things and I can tell you that if we do it again, it'll, we'll do it a little differently. So I, that's on me, not the staff, that one's just, I just had too much faith in our media. Um, but we'll do better. We can always do better.
I just want to access information to make this very, uh, most change. Like you got a lot of people pushing, over a hill along, but that block, I don't know why they're doing it. Somebody might not later on, oh, that wasn't for because of that reason. Maybe putting communication for the folks who want to go on Instagram or Facebook or the county website. And like I said, slapping when people gather, it's probably gonna get more eyeballs, the information you wanna share out. You get more people in there, like, you know, like Big Save to the world or, I don't know.
No, yeah, I, I, I got the point. I, I, again, I think we can do better. Even for those of you that are not subscribed to the county's, uh, the councils, you, you can go on our county council webpage and subscribe to our agenda. So you get emailed the agenda every week so you can read, uh, what's on the agenda to see if there's anything on there that might interest you. Also, again, you know, Huiki is a great source, uh, would highly recommend getting onto Huiki. And in fact, we, and we talked about this a couple of meetings ago, but, um, we are gonna be streaming the, the council meetings live on YouTube as well. We're trying to get it out as much as possible because you're right. I mean, communication is, you, there's so many, um, people that are just not in the loop and it's not their fault. You know, not everyone has access to internet, not everyone is, checks email. Um, there's gotta be a better way and, um, trust me, your, Kristin is back there, she's getting writer's, what do you call that? Writer's crap, whatever, uh.
Is there, is there any hope of the discussion about the monster housing zoning by law reforms? Does that even like, you're hoping or not?
Well, no, well, there are limitations to homes, the size of homes currently in, in, in the zoning code.
But is there like something that would actually reflect this? A lot of people who go up here and have seen a lot of the changes, some positive, a lot negative. And maybe they have a lot of questions about why things are still the way they are. Maybe it's other different amendments to have like a toilet amendment. Maybe it's like time for overhaul and like start from scratch.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, that, that is one option, that, that is a definite option. I'm sorry, go ahead, sir.
My name is Solid, I live Keikaha. I just wanted to touch on, uh, if you guys were thinking about, you know, the 400 project is great outside of the island, but, you know, we know that can come like Poipu, we build big project, but then the roads fall. See like Waimea Town, what you was talking about earlier, is when you get to Big Save and you get one guy trying to turn and the traffic coming from the east and the traffic is backed up past the stoplight. So I don't know who's, who runs Waimea state or county, but we need to get a turning lane so that we can continue to go straight. And if it's one car, that can roll out 50 cars. And then the parking, the two parking right there in front of the mill, where they get a turning lane for going to the mill, you get two parking stalls right there and then you get the big truck stalling. And the tourist guy come, you wait, the door open, you cannot go around.
This is on Keikaha Road by the.
No, Waimea. Ready for the mill, Waimea Mill.
Huh? Oh, yeah, 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 okay, yeah, that's, yeah.
Yeah, right by the traffic light.
Got it.
That two right there. If you guys can take that away, then the traffic can go straight and it's nobody trying to open the door, trying to get out and then you cannot go around, but all the trucks go down here.
We'll, we'll, we'll send their recommendation over as well to the, that's the state, but, again, I, I don't think that, I don't know how the engineers, when they come down and they design that, they're not thinking about the big truck, right? They're not thinking about the big truck.
Yeah, if you could make that Waimea Town a little bit wider, like Huiki Town, I, I think it'd work out better for everybody.
Yeah, again, you know, I don't like punting, but his name is Ron Koichi and her name is Dee Morikawa. That's the spirit of the.
No, I'm just trying to plant the seed in your.
Yeah, no, and I agree with you. I mean, we, I think, you know, we would definitely support that. Yeah, that, I, I understand.
Okay, Mahal.
Okay, you had one more, I think, over there?
Hi, ma'am.
Hi.
We're in Nizo, I live Keikaha.
Yes, sir.
When, uh, I take notice, you know, when you came in Keikaha, I, I go work at, you know, Tawai Coffee, but it's kinda awkward that things. You got one hole by, uh, boat harbor? Yeah, when you came, you, you see how that pig had over there? It used to be one hole inside there. When you drive over there, you know, you can pack your car.
Which boat harbor you talk?
Uh, Keikaha.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
You, you see when you came and checked your car, uh, that's the one.
They, they, didn't they fix that?
No, they, they had petrol, but. They, they put the asphalt, they never screwed them out. Yeah.
Okay, you know, I, somebody, somebody had put them on Facebook. I forget who it was, somebody put them on Facebook, so I had email, I forget who he sent to, I think Department of Transportation, but Dee Morikawa also, and she was so proud, she tell me, fix?
No. You know what, you know what, when you came, you never filmed that, you know, who was driving?
The Puka still there?
Yeah.
Christine, I mean.
They never screwed them out. It just showed the asphalt on and then just it.
Okay. See, that's against stuff that, I gotta be nice.
Yeah, because I live Keikaha, yeah, every day I, it's my road coming home. And then I get one question. When they gonna pave that road from the boat harbor all the way to, uh, Keikaha Garden? The inside, not the outside, the inside here, or? Mako Road. It's so bad.
That one, they're, they're redoing that entire road, right? They're gonna, they, they basically re-renovating or what, what do you call it? They're renovating that whole road. It's, um, Troy, maybe you can, I'm sorry, bro. We just, we just had that update.
That, that road all the way to Keikaha Garden.
Yeah, no, that's the one.
Keikaha Garden.
You talk about Keikaha Road inside, not the highway.
Not the outside.
That is on the plan. Troy, maybe you can help us with that.
All the way to past his road, oh, his house over there, around that turn.
Okay, Troy, right there, check, give the mic to the guy right behind you. That's the guy in charge. He's the man.
So, um, the engineering division has a project. I guess so, so you guys don't get sore neck, yeah?
So last time Troy come into these things, right there.
We have a project, um, to improve Keikaha Road. They're looking at adding sidewalks. They're looking at adding, um, other improvements, some, you know, some new crossings. They're gonna look at drainage on the road, try and improve, uh, stormwater drainage. Um, right now, um, because that area is so flat, the old drainage, um, structures that were put in underneath the road, it doesn't work anymore. So we're gonna look at all of that and improve the road. Um, the improvement will go from Kamuli Highway all the way through Keikaha Town, past the school, and then back up towards the highway. I can't remember the, the name of that road going back up, but, um, so there'll be sidewalks, you know, it'll be a much more friendly, um, area for kupuna to walk. And, um, you know, we really try to push that project, you know, to get it out as soon as possible. But more than likely, we're looking at probably fiscal year 2026 for that to happen.
By government standards, that's quick.
And, and the reason why it's taking so long is, you know, it's a federal aid project. We have to do all of the environmental work. Um, the historic preservation is probably the, the one that takes the longest to complete, so. It's not working because, um, the, the covers that were put in are too flat. So what we're thinking is, um, a, a better system would be drywells. And it's worked for us, um, pretty good in other areas. And, um, you guys actually have drywells on Elapaya Road that we recently cleaned and, you know, put back in, in service. Yeah, so those drywells, you have to go in periodically and do maintenance and then it starts, you know, to work like it's supposed to. Yes.
This summer. You guys heard? We are live on Huiki this summer.
Yes, I'm ready now this summer. Yeah, I hope there's no delay.
Okay.
Can we offer these to some other community members? Sorry, Chelsea Ruiz, um, Keikaha resident. Can we offer these to other Keikaha residents or anybody that we know that would have wanted to come tonight?
If they ever come, sorry. No, just kidding. You know, the good thing is this is the last one and we get several stacks of that stuff out in the back, so you help yourself.
Cause you said this is very important, right?
It is because, and again, if you guys had raised a concern tonight and you want the follow-up, you wanna be, uh, made a, you know, kept abreast of the follow-up, please fill that out. So we can, we can make sure you guys be kept in the loop.
I know Ki'i talked about like trash cans and some of the smaller things. I know this is big, but a lot of our parents have been asking if there could be a bathroom like in the middle of the Keikaha Park versus all the way down at the end? Or if there could be an additional one and an additional safe one where our kids can go and not have to worry about anybody in the bathrooms? Um, cause you know, what Ki'i said is very true on a daily. There's a lot of, um, our homelessness and then the increase in, you know, mental health. You see them every day if you're in Keikaha. And, um, so just that, like if we could have a bathroom on this side in between the two baseball fields, um, something closer, I've been hearing a lot of that. And then, um, just like a tsunami emergency plan, like Uncle Randy was talking earlier. I know he said not so much tsunami, but for me, living in Keikaha all my life, I would worry about tsunami and we practice it like, like it's real when we're at the school.
Well, you guys are a little, my, we're driving out here. My wife, no jokes, she's sitting in the back there, we're driving, she goes, I don't even like to live out here. I'm like, why? That ocean is close.
So like for me, yeah, it was scary since a kid, like I remember going up 3. Like, I remember going up three times, right? And now even more so, like going up there. I know there were some talks, I know like Auntie Leah Pereira, I heard, you know, long ago, them talking about like building some things up there or a facility or something so that when you do go up there, there's places, like a pavilion or something. But I mean, just an emergency plan? Because our kids are, yeah, gonna run. What about everybody else who's gonna drive up there and be stuck like how we are every time we do go? So just that kind of like things I was thinking about. And then, um, just another question I had when she was talking about the housing. I know, I think a few of our friends are like, my sister had, um, that home buyer program where they would rent to own or something like that. Do they still have those programs?
They still have the program, Housing does.
OK, that was one of my questions.
If any of you know people that are looking to rent or buy first time, uh, yeah, have them reach out to our housing agency. They have a program that, uh, you gotta attend. You gotta go through the classes and you gotta get certified and you get put on a list. And then when the housing becomes available, they go right off of that list. So that that is available.
OK, thank you.
So you're turning that paper in, right? OK, because I never take notes. My paper is full. We'll take one more. Anybody get one more? If not, thank you guys again. Um, I'll hang off a little bit. If you guys want to talk to me about more personal stuff, I'll be right here. Again, mahalo to Huiki for, uh, for doing this live. And, uh, we'll see you guys next time. Aloha, you guys, take care.